Good evening. Welcome to the Muskogee County School District's March 8, 2021 Board Work Session. It's good to see everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our first item on the agenda is the public agenda, which we have each month. We do not have an individual that's scheduled for today. Instead, Ms. Elamin listed here will show up next Monday for a regularly scheduled board meeting. And just as a reminder to the public, all official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items of the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to place any review of any individual employee performance or individual parent complaint that have not been addressed by this principal or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow the normal channels to address such problems. And anyone who wants to appear on the public agenda can go through the process also that's listed on our website by emailing Ms. Karen Jones. We'll go right on to our property committee, Ms. Chambers.
Madam Chair, I think it's Education Committee.
Did I skip over? Thank you. Education Committee, Ms. Buckner.
Madam Chair, could you cut my video back on, please? It won't, it won't start the video, it says.
Ms. Buckner, would you go ahead while I?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Green, I didn't hear that. What was that?
Education Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the Education Committee has two items. The first one is the pre-kindergarten update, and we have somebody doing that.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Lewis. My name is Kimberly Thomas, and I'm the pre-K director. Thank you for this opportunity for me to provide an update about our pre-K students and what's going on in the world of pre-K this year. So first, I would like to start off by saying, let's make sure my screen. Roger, I am experiencing technical difficulties, and I apologize for that. So our goals for Georgia Pre-K is always to provide an opportunity for our youngest learners who are four years of age to become a part of our school district. And in our program, we work with our children to make sure that they are ready to become learners in the kindergarten school year. We work and make sure that they are able to learn to solve problems utilizing words, to be able to compromise with one another, to be respectful, to work with their peers. We introduce classroom rituals and routines. We provide opportunities for them to use, utilize their language while we're sharing stories, discussing stories, where they're providing daily opportunities during center time, small group instruction. We introduce math concepts. We utilize rhymes and poems to help to make sure our students are developmentally appropriately taught those prerequisite reading skills. I'm sorry, there's a delay in my screen, guys. During our pre-K program, we also participate, we have pre-K instructional standards. Our pre-K instructional standards allow us to, to provide opportunities through play for the students to participate in activities such as science, math games, where they're learning how to solve problems, to engage in conversation. They explain what they're doing, how they're doing it, so that they can, we can understand their way of thinking and provide instruction to tailor to their particular individual needs. This year in pre-K, we are providing the two different instructional models. We have thirty-five traditional face-to-face classrooms and eleven virtual classrooms as well. Our virtual classrooms provide daily instruction, large group instruction, small group instruction, as well as individual sessions two times a week. We are also providing all of our families with at-home activities that they can do with, to supplement our daily instruction. The virtual guidelines are being implemented from the State Department. We utilize those guidelines to help us to plan the instruction to meet the needs of our students. Virtual instruction, let's talk about virtual instruction as far as pre-K is concerned. The students and teachers meet daily for up to an hour and a half. The teacher has the same daily instructional timeframe where she provides that large group instruction. She incorporates morning meetings, story time, as well as math activities. This is a sample picture of one of our virtual teachers. She's completing a math lesson with an individual student. They do games, and the students are also participating in our supplemental activities such as Lexia, as well as ABC Mouse. We have supplemental computer programs. And you see a sample of a student demonstrating his letter knowledge with the letter F and M, demonstrating and showing his teacher what he is doing at home. We have another friend who is working on the, on number recognition and being able to write his numbers. We work with our parents as partners. We share instructional strategies. We also have pre-K progress reports that we send home with our families to let them know how the students are progressing on the instructional standards. We keep our parents informed. We are also utilizing Canvas as a part of our daily instruction. We post our newsletter. We have our daily Zoom links where the parents are able to communicate with the teachers as well. Classroom newsletters are posted in Canvas. We utilize ClassDojo apps, Remind apps to communicate messages about instruction as well as to answer parents' questions. We provide daily hands-on packets that we are available for our parents through Canvas, as well as they're available for pickup outside of the school, uh, school doors daily. The parents and teachers in Georgia Pre-K, according to the guidelines, we meet twice a year, face-to-face. This year, of course, we're utilizing Zoom to conduct our parent conferences that take place in the month of December, as well as in the month of May. During those conferences, our goal is to discuss how the students are progressing and to provide intervention supports that may be needed or challenging activities depending on the level of each individual child. We have wonderful community partners that are supportive of our pre-K program. As you can see in our community, we have some billboards this year advertising our pre-K enrollment period that was sponsored by our Chambers of Commerce Department. In our community, they paid for those, some of those billboards for us. We collaborate with Columbus 2025 and the Basics. United Way is one of our wonderful partners. Our Columbus Library, we've, um, they are supporting us each and every year, including this year. They have the media specialist to come in and have story time with our students, and they do supplemental activities. A fabulous Columbus Museum, they are also partnering with us. And that is a picture of one of the activities, supplemental activities that they're doing this year with our students. They share stories, and then they do follow-up activities with the children that relate to the stories. And in this particular art activity, they're supposed to be creating their own pottery, a sample of a vase that related to the story that was previously introduced. The stores are introduced virtually. A member of the team at the Columbus Museum shares the story. She provides all of the materials for the teachers to do the supplemental activities in class. We are partnering with the WIC program. They provide supplemental meals for families who meet the eligibility requirements. Instead of the families having to go to the health department, they bring those WIC services and vouchers to the local schools for the students and families who choose to participate. First Readers is one of our partners, as well as enrichment services. We have three blended classrooms that are supplemented by the Head Start Funds. Our pre-K program currently has forty-six classes at sixteen different elementary schools. And this is just a list of the overall locations, as well as the number of classes that are offered at each pre-K site. Our timeline for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we are currently underway enrolling students by the online pre-K application that's available on our district webpage. The students must be four years of age, honor before September the first. All families who participate in the online application will be notified of the lottery results on March the twenty-sixth. Each family will receive an email, hopefully of the lottery results, either notifying them, congratulations, your child has won a lottery seat at the designated school based on their address, or they're placed on the waiting list. Currently, we have over seven-hundred-and-forty-two applications. I'm so excited about that because I feel like the word is being spread in our community, and I, I do appreciate everyone's support. We're communicating the word in our community about our pre-K application. Please note, this is not the only time that we'll be accepting applications. We continue accepting applications after the original, the initial lottery results are sent out. Once the families receive notification on March the twenty-sixth, then they will log on to the Infinite Campus and upload their documents and accept the offer at that time. The waiting list applications will be available on April the twelfth, and we will continue to accept applications throughout the year. For the first time, we are also applying for a pre-K lottery grant that will offer our current enrolled pre-K students a summer opportunity to attend summer classes. The summer classes will be gearing up just to prepare them for kindergarten for the upcoming school year. Students are eligible to participate in this program if they have, number one, attended school this year virtually. Our virtual students will be invited to participate and to come into class to get to know their school campus for the upcoming school year. If we are awarded the grant, we will receive notification in April, and hopefully we will, because I'm looking forward to that opportunity being provided for the families in our community. At this time, this concludes my update. I want to see if you have any questions for me.
I have, I have one question, Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Um, from year to year, how many kids are left on that waiting list usually once the lottery has concluded?
At this time, we have zero students on the waiting list. Usually, we may have a few at the beginning of the year, but over time, because some students may move or relocate to other communities, we're able to go to that waiting list and fill those seats. To be honest with you, Ms. Chambers, one of my goals for the pre-K department is to have a waiting list. I would love to have a waiting list for all of our sites, all of our elementary schools. Because if we maintain a waiting list, that will be evidence for the Georgia Pre-K to allow us to add additional classes.
Absolutely. Okay, that, that was the reason for my question. One, I wanted to make sure that we're able to service every four-year-old that, that wants to participate in the pre-K program. But my second question was going to be, how do we add more classes if we have a long waiting list? But I'm glad to know that we're serving the ones that we have, and, and maybe we need to sort of increase our advertisement. Not you, I know you're doing your part, but we as board members and just in the community, we can advocate for the program so we can make sure that our four-year-olds in Columbus, Georgia are educated through our system. So definitely, great job, Ms. Thomas. Thank you so much for the information.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions? If, I'd like to ask the question. I was, Mrs. Chambers says, I've talked about how we can include more students, and you said something about the good thing about having a waiting list, if we had one, the possibility of increasing more seats. So, my question is, is online registration the only way that a kid could sign up for pre-K? Because perhaps there are people who want to sign up, but they don't have the availability of computers or the technology to sign up, which will be kids that are not included, not because they do not want to attend, because, but because they are unable to have the necessary equipment to sign up. So is there, are we, do we do anything to help kids who don't have computers or who may not know the technology for parents to sign up? Or we, do we do anything about that? Is this the absolute only way?
No, it's not the only way. We all, we register families via the telephone. If they call our department, we're able to register families over the telephone. Another option, we, if they would like to come in and schedule an appointment during this time, we are accepting appointments daily to assist them in any way possible because we want to register and enroll all families who would like to participate.
Very good. That's good to know.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Buckner. I'm, I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
Okay, one other thing in terms of, uh, seats available. Now, this is per school, or do we do a total system seats available? Or like, as of now, I think you said we have seven-hundred and something. So how many, what's the possibility? How, how many eligible seats are we allowed?
Nine-hundred-and-ninety-four eligible seats to, uh, in our total program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Dr. Lewis, how can we get? Okay, I see it. The, the pre-K enrollment information is on the Facebook page. We may need to refresh it. It's been thirty days since it's been posted. Maybe we can put that or pin it to the top until, um, after February, the, let me see, March the fifteenth? Would that be possible?
Yes, ma'am. We can look at that and see if we can adjust our webpage accordingly on.
Thank you.
Okay, are there, are there any more questions or comments?
I do, Naomi.
Okay.
Ms. Thomas, when the SPOLOST program was going on, I noticed at the entrance of most of the elementary schools I've visited had little signs, speaking of the SPOLOST, do we have, do you have signs telling folks about the, the pre-K at, at the elementary schools for, you know, little brothers and sisters that, when the mom and dads come in to bring the kids?
Yes, sir. We have the yard signs that have been delivered to every site, as well as the flyers. We made copies and had those delivered to every site to send home with big brothers and sisters who are receiving in-person instruction. So, and some of the schools are also sending out those connected messages to their families.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
I just want to acknowledge, I just want to acknowledge Ms. Thomas. She's done a tremendous job in her role as director for pre-K, and she's really brought a new life to the program and vision. But I really do want to encourage all of our parents who have eligible students for pre-K, as she indicated. Really, it's so important for them to get involved in the pre-K program. It gives them such a start in their schooling success. And just want to encourage every parent who has a child who's eligible to please consider putting them in our pre-K program and getting a great start for their school career.
Okay, one other quick question. And, um, for, uh, when a, when a school has its eligible seats filled, and there are students perhaps on a waiting list or wanting to still be part of a pre-K program, that child is probably, is that child eligible for another seat somewhere else in the district?
We offer every, um, school that has an available seat to that family. We keep a current list. We are checking constantly to see what, whether there is an availability. And we offer every child, every school that we have an opening.
Okay. And so, yeah, and so that means that they are eligible for a school somewhere elsewhere. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to our school calendar. It's a two-year school calendar, and we have, anyone who's gonna explain, it avoids itself. Evidence.
Yes, ma'am.
Keith.
Yes. Keith Seifer, Chief Academic Officer for the district. Let me see here. I, I do want to say kudos to Kimberly Thomas for what she does with pre-K. Does she not exhibit a, a pre-K attitude? And she's always got a smile on her face, always looking to solve problems for parents, and really appreciate what she's doing to get the word out. And, and many thanks to the, uh, the community partners for what they're doing. They've really done a, stepped up and done a wonderful job this year for advertising pre-K and, and certainly Mercedes Parham for what she's done to get that communication plan going. So really done a good job with that. I'm excited about that.
Keith, before we go on, if I may, just to interject, Mercedes just reminded me that we, the pre-K is actually on our homepage as an article, and it's also in every single one of our weekly reminders. So that's another way we try and keep it in front of parents and everybody who possibly might have access to getting kids in, in our pre-K program.
Wonderful job, wonderful job. I'm here to present the information on the district twenty-two, twenty-three calendars. It's twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three district calendars and the recommendations. Before I get started, I, I have to say, this is, I did not do this alone by any means. There was a committee that helped support this. Janice Bloodworth, Arleska Castillo, and Mercedes Parham were really intricate in, in getting this, uh, this together and, and working to try to help survey our parents and, and staff and, and trying to get all this together. So kudos to them, and I really appreciate what they're, what they're doing. So what, what, um, what we're seeing is just a brief overview. Wanted to provide some information that we, that you'll see in, in the presentation. We did, uh, we did identify some parameters. We gathered feedback from, uh, from staff on those parameters. You have a copy of that information in your, um, in your packet of information loaded in the, in the board docs. We utilize feedback from the committee that I just mentioned. The employees, I, I think we received the, the most feedback we've ever had on, on calendars. So we surveyed the employees three times. We took the information to Principal Advisory, as well as Teacher Advisory. Cabinet had looked at this, as well as Dr. Lewis. And all that information that you, that we presented to them, we took to heart and, and made additional changes as necessary. We also utilized external feedback from our community stakeholders group, which you have a list of those individuals that, that participated on that, and many thanks to them. We met with them on a couple of occasions to go over the, the, the proposed calendars and gathered impact, input from them as well. And then we did a parent slash student survey that was sent out to everybody. On the parameters, we, we made sure that we aligned our payroll to, uh, to the district calendar as we, as we always do. As we looked at the instructional staff and the start date, and it's been identified that we want to start after July thirty-first. It's kind of a maintained over the years. We also looked at our testing windows to ensure we completed and got input regarding testing. And, and as you know, we did not, um, we've had, last year, we did not utilize, we did not do the G-Mass. This year, we will. However, we wanted to make sure that those testing were, were there to, uh, to meet Stan, meet our calendar needs. Professional Development Days and Planning Days, we had three scheduled as we, as we do. The schools need those days to help solidify any, any professional development or planning that goes on during the school year. We instituted a weather contingency day. We recognize all breaks and observe holidays. And then new this year, we're, we're proposing to institute a, a phase-in day for our pre-K through second grade students, and then a system-wide virtual learning day that will be done during the first semester. Just a little information on the phase-in day. We identified the phase-in day based on the information and the feedback we received from teachers and principals through our phase-in approach this past year. We know that we want to provide an opportunity for students to get acclimated, to become familiar with their teachers, administrators, and their, and their school. That's important. We want to make sure we emphasize the ritual and routines, and, and, and the focus is on our pre-K through second grade students. Our students in grades three through twelve, they will maintain the original calendar and the, and the original start date that we identified in the calendars. Our virtual learning day, that was, uh, as you know, we've done a lot of virtual learning this school year. We opened up the school year during three weeks of virtual learning. We, we certainly want to learn from that and continue that process. And we need to do that to ensure we, we do not lose our skills in that particular area. And, uh, and, and to ensure that we can, if there are inclement weather days or there are potential safety concerns, we can go into a virtual mode based on the knowledge that we have and the practice that we have. This day is designed to do that, is to provide that opportunity. And we have one virtual learning day that is scheduled for the first, in the first semester. This will be done by providing synchronous and asynchronous or live instruction or versus independent, independent assignments that teachers assign. So the teachers will be providing those lessons during that day. Students will, will work from home during that day. So the teachers will plan, obviously, for that and provide lessons that, that will be supported on that day. They will either do assigned activities or asynchronous work, or they will provide live instruction. They will either do assigned activities or asynchronous work, or they will provide live instruction during that, during that day. Where teachers or teachers can check in with students, students can check in with teachers to help support a small group instruction or any needs the students may have for, for their learning. Based on the, on the surveys, as we, as we stated, we, we gathered some key findings. As, as we've said in surveying our, our teachers, they want to start after July 31st. They wanted to do the phase-in approach. That would, we would do that during the first semester. We wanted to make sure we had five days of planning when we start the school year. The post, post-planning, they, they wanted to see that it was after Memorial Day. Or before, excuse me, before Memorial Day. And then, and then those days really only needed two post-planning days, and they needed to be consecutive or not broken up by a holiday. That was for 190 days, all our, and all our employee preferences. They were split on, on the weather contingency day. And we did assign it as we normally do on President's Day, if there's a need to utilize that day. We will continue that, the five days for Thanksgiving as we always do. We wanted to make sure we institute, this was feedback from the, the teachers that we had 10 days at winter break. And we surveyed and, and those, for those results. And that the first week of April for spring break was identified as the key findings that they wanted, wanted to be the first week of April. So with that, we proposed, and you have that, that calendar in, in the information that was submitted. We surveyed our, our teachers as well as our parents on option one, which was all, all calendars were the same with the exception of spring break. Option one had the spring break in the first week of April. Option two had it the last week of March on both calendars. We received the results. Option one for the employees, 59% of the, the employees voted for option one versus 41%. And then on, on the 22, 23 calendar, option one was 57% versus 43%. So option one was the calendar based on the employees that they selected. Parents on the 21, 22, parents and students, 63% voted for option one, 37% option two. And then for 20, 22, 23, 60% voted for option one. And 40% surveyed, looked at option two. So with that, the, the proposal is to, for option one, 20, 21, 22, and option one for 21, 22, 23 with the, and again, those, those are attached for, for review.
Any questions?
Any questions?
What's the last day of school, Mr. Seifert?
Last day of school for, in 21, 22 is the 24th of May.
And what about for 20, for both years?
22, 23 is the 23rd.
And when will graduation be? I know that's off, but is that the 27th or is it?
No, no, we will have, we will host graduation that week prior to the 18th, 19th, and 20th.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Excuse me. That's correct. 18th through, 19th through the 21st.
Are there any more questions?
It looks like, are we now having like one more, I think the students will have one more day off around that President's Day break that we kind of haven't had in the past?
Yes, ma'am. We, we wanted to, to ensure we had the, the two days at post-planning. And we met the, the number of days, the 91 days, because we have 89 first semester and 91 second semester. We had, we identified a day on the 18th for a professional learning slash planning day. We wanted to make sure we included three days of professional learning.
I think, I think parents will like that because it does give a little more, you know, a little more of a break to that February if, if they are trying to travel.
Breaks up second semester a little bit.
I had a lot of people asking me what the difference was. So the difference really was just the spring breaks. And then from a previous years, we also now have, you know, this in February, but it wasn't different between the options, correct?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Green, that concludes the Education Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Thank you, Ms. Thomas and Mr. Seifert. Now we're on Property Committee. Ms. Chambers?
Thank you. Moving on to the Property Committee, we have 4.01, that is the surplus and sale of property. And if you see attached there, there is a large amount of smart boards being surplused. Is there a reason that we're surplusing the smart boards?
Someone's gonna speak to that. Those are probably the originals from the '05 squads, maybe.
Yes, these are outdated components. Mr. Pleasant may want to speak to that, but these are basically retired antiquated items that now are no longer of service to the same level that we need them at this point. Mr. Pleasant?
That's correct. They have been replaced. They've been pulled out of the classrooms and replaced with newer technology. And so most of them will be broken units that don't function anymore.
Okay. Some of them are operable though? And will these be sold or are we trashing hundreds and hundreds of smart boards?
We will, this is Janice Bloodworth. We will try to recycle them. We will have, we will put them out for a bid for like a recycling company to bid on to be able to sell them that way.
Okay. Um, okay. Will you all let us know what happens to the smart board? How we're, whether we're able to sell them or whether we discarded them? I just know that smart boards are very expensive and it's like hundreds of them on this surplus list. And I do understand that there is, that we do Permethium boards or in the place of the smart boards or we got updated smart boards.
Right. And we will, we will send the information out for bid. And once that bid comes back, we will present that back to the board.
Okay, sounds good.
Much like we do with other surplus property. You've seen vehicles, you've seen kitchen equipment, things like that. Once we get those dispositions on those, we're bringing those back to the board for action.
Okay, sounds good. And, and can someone speak to what the teachers now have to use instead of these smart boards?
I can. Right now, they currently have a modern version of a smart board. Or they might have a projector-based solution that projects on a dry erase board. Or they might have a flat panel. However, recently, we just concluded an RFP where we sought to actually replace all the solutions with flat panels. Essentially, it looks like a flat panel TV that has a touchscreen surface to it. And we will begin doing that over the summer and in years coming up to replace everybody with, with that technology.
Okay. So we will then come back once we start replacing those boards with a new list of boards to surplus. And we will get them surplused quicker than what we did these.
Okay, so there are more boards that need to be surplused?
Well, whenever we start replacing them with the new, the new ones that we will be purchasing soon, there will be a, a, a rotation of those through. And we will be bringing those to the board on a regular basis as we are replacing those items.
Okay. And last question I have about the smart boards. I know that the teachers use the smart boards to teach. And some of it comes with software to teach math and different things. Was there, is there gonna be an update of the software also? Or that may be online now. I don't know. I just want to make sure that they have something in the place of this that will still allow them to sort of do the same thing.
The board, one, sorry, Ron, excuse me. The boards that we're replacing now are actually boards that were replaced probably eight years ago.
It's time to get more.
That, these are the ones that were before the ones that we have right now. And now we're ready to get rid of even more and buy new ones. So this is almost not the boards that they are using currently, but they're boards that they were using before those board, the boards they have now.
Oh, okay. So these have been in a warehouse somewhere?
Absolutely.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, that helps.
And we just want to always point out, these, the new technology is always provided through our ESPLS. So we thank again our, our constituents for ensuring that we have this updated technology.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Any other questions about the surplus items, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to 4.02, which is the museum report. And I'm not gonna read it to you, but it is attached. I do want to just point out one thing, that next month, we are looking forward to our virtual school tours. We have an increase in requests and are excited to welcome more Muskogee County School District students and teachers to participate. Hey, we will also offer limited in-person programs during spring break for which we are very excited. So those of you that are staying in town for spring break, just remember the museum will be open. Okay? Any questions about 4.02 before we move on to the library report? Okay. Hearing none, I will move on to 4.03, that is the library report. It is attached, and I just want to mention that the book drops are open again and the library is no longer quarantining books and other materials. The 24-hour kiosks are also accepting returns. So please note that all of the Chattahoochee Valley libraries are open, as many people may not know this. And book bundles are available at all age groups for curbside service. And the rest of it is attached. You can read that at your leisure. Any questions about the library report? Okay, hearing none, that concludes the Property Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Ms. Jackson, Personnel?
5.01 is the Personnel Report. There's three.
Excuse me, one minute, Ms. Jackson. I want to ask something about the library. And I don't know if Ms. Chambers knows this, or if we have, yeah. Okay, so Mrs. Chambers said that the library is open. So does that mean that you could stay more than the hour that, right now, person can come in and use the library, the computers for an hour? So when she says the library is open, what does that mean? I mean, can you come in the library and stay in the library as, as we previously did for?
Yes, ma'am.
Alan, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Alan Harkness, Library Director. Yes, the libraries are open. You can come in and use them as you see fit. However, we are limiting people to one hour stay.
Okay, we still let the one hour there?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I, I keep getting people tell me they didn't know we were open, and I don't know how to fix that other than to remind everybody.
Right.
I didn't know either.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Jackson.
Not a problem. On the Personnel Report, there's three attachments. The Professional Report, Support Report, and the Substitution Report. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Cantrell, Construction?
I think you're muted, Mr. Cantrell. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Trying to get prepared. This is the main thing. Moving on to 6.01, the Otis Spencer Stadium Project. Freeman and Associates Incorporated was approved as the construction manager contractor for the Otis Spencer Stadium Project by the Board at the August 17th, 2020 meeting. Request is to add $1.8 million to the construction budget of the stadium. There's been numerous industrial-wide price increases mainly due to COVID-19. For example, the cost of site work and still have increased significantly since September of 2020. We have trimmed the value engineered as much as possible without reducing the quality, the functionality of the athletic complex. We have main capacity for tennis, football, flag football, soccer, lacrosse as originally conceived. Is there anybody else to speak on it or?
We have Mr. Battles, Mr. Goldberg, and the architect, Mr. Patel, joining us this evening for any questions or comments they'd like to offer.
The first one to come up. Thank you. Any questions, Board? Are they gonna speak on it, David, or is they, are they gonna just wait for questions?
Do you want us to bring up the presentation, Mr. Battles?
Yes, sir, please do.
All right. Hang on.
Good evening to the Board and Dr. Lewis, Jeff Battle, Director of Athletics. Thank you for having me here this evening. Tonight, we are going to present the GMP for the Otis Spencer Stadium Project. Also have online our architects, Dear Patel. Next is two of our renderings to show you the potential we have to build a beautiful and functional athletic complex. This first rendering is our aerial shot of the stadium, of the proposed stadium. As you can see, it's precast concrete on both sides, artificial turf fields. We have five tennis courts on the south end of the stadium. The area behind the stadium, there, there are apartments and such back there. But this is pretty much the layout of what we'll have from aerial shot. As you approach the main entrance of the stadium, if you can go to the next slide, the walkway is lined with eight poles, eight flag poles. Each pole will have a, a flag from each of our eight high schools that participate in athletics on it. As you can see here, there's a couple that you can see. And then this is the main entrance that would go into the stadium. Next slide, please. And then here is our proposal that Mr. Cantrell read to everyone. Are there any questions?
Jeff, this is Kathy Williams. I do have one question. This is, this is a combined use facility for our district as well as the city. Isn't that correct?
It's a primary use facility for our district.
Like Connet?
Yes, ma'am, like Connet. There, there could be some, some, some non-district functions on there. For instance, there could be different football games played there, tennis. We've spoken to Corde and they were instrumental in helping us, you know, to help design that area of it. So the tennis courts could be used by Corde for some things. And other, other events could happen at the stadium. Yes, ma'am.
So I know that, I know that with a lot of our sporting facilities that are property-specific, you know, that are, you know, at, at, I don't know, the Big Hertz Columbus High School fields and stuff, that the alumni generally will raise money for signage. But this seems like it's a little different because it's district-wide and the alumni is, the alum, alumni at Spencer the alum, alumni at Spencer High was trying to figure out how to raise money for the signage here. Shouldn't that somewhat be a district responsibility since it serves the entire district and not just one school and one kinda set of alumni?
Yes, ma'am. There, there won't be any expectation for, um, Spencer High School to, to give their alumni to give any money for this. This is, it's not, um, affiliated with Spencer High School specifically. Any more than it is any of the rest of the high schools and middle schools that are, that will play there, so.
That's what I thought. I just, I just needed to make sure of that. Thank you.
And, and also, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. That's all.
Um, but are there any opportunities for, um?
So we will have, uh, same, the same thing we do at Connect Stadium. We will offer uh, digital ads because the scoreboard will be a digital board. We will offer digital ads throughout the community. Um, so that part, the community, uh, businesses can partner with us and have their advertisements shown at, uh, football, flag football, cross soccer, all the games where the digital board is on, their ads will be shown.
Um, question, are there any other opportunities for the district to sorta gain funds for maintenance and things like that? If someone other than the district is using the facility?
When we, we allow, um, non-district personnel to use facility, use that usually there is a facility charge for that.
Might also point out, uh, with Mr. Patel being the architect, one of the things we asked him to do was to design this field so it could be optimal for hosting marching band competitions or band showcases. Those typically bring a lot of, uh, fans, uh, along with them, uh, to the event and those are usually week-long or weekend-long events. Uh, so, uh, that would provide an opportunity for us to, uh, be able to host in our community large numbers of people associated with those band, uh, competitions. So, uh, the, the stadium has been built with that in mind as far as the sightlines and so on for optimal use.
We have cameras for technology for, for security and also maybe even vandalism. Where, um, if something happened out there that we might be able to catch the vandals.
We, we are in discussion with, um, DIS and, and, and the, um, construction manager talking about security cameras and other sort.
Thank you.
So is there gonna be some different kind of security for this stadium that we would not have at Connect?
No, ma'am. Uh, it, it's a, it's a conversation we're having about both stadiums.
Okay, just let, let's make that clear because we don't wanna insinuate that we're anticipating some unusual crime occurring out there or some unusual vandalism that we would protect, that we need, have the need to protect against that we would not provide at any facility for MCSD. I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
No, ma'am. We, we, we started having conversations last year about the possibility of putting security cameras up at several of our district areas and this would, if, if we do those, this would just be added into those.
It's absolutely beautiful, um, facility. I, I, I love the way it's laid out. Um, is this backing up to the land where Spencer High School is? And the old Casita Road Elementary School, we sold that land, correct? Did we sell that? No?
No, ma'am. This, this is the, the actual football field is about where the old Casita Road Elementary School was located.
Oh, okay, perfect. So I've been seeing them clearing that space. So, okay. That, that sounds good, looks good. Okay.
And again, and again, the additional cost is for the site preparation. Uh, there's a quite a bit of need for us raising the, uh, the, uh, I think ten to fourteen feet, uh, as far as the site work is required in that area. Uh, and then like I said, the, uh, uh, or like Mr. Battles shared, uh, the increased costs in steel and so like that. So that's what the overrun is on the cost. But the good news is we do have funding for that, uh, in some of our past projects from two thousand fifteen as far, and without sacrificing any of our projects. Mr. Goldberg, Goldberg could probably speak to that.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Before he goes, I wanna ask another question about the, uh, the, uh, facility. I heard Dr. Lewis talk about, um, those hosting, uh, various types of events to include, um, a band, uh, bands. Uh, and that, of course, is, that brings a lot of, as we host that, that brings a lot of money to the community, of course, which makes our taxes, our one cent and all that. Uh, but, um, so are we charging anything for these events? Like, do we make any additional money for, uh, hosting these events?
Yeah, it all depend on, um, who hosted it, who, you know, if, if Muskogee County hosted it, then, then we would make most of the money from um, from the entrance fees and such. If it was a third party hosting it, then there will be a rental fee that they were charged to use the facility.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to reiterate what Dr. Lewis was saying about the funding um, and no other projects suffering during the two thousand fifteen splash. As we move forward, y'all, um, remember that the receipts did not really come in as they were projected for the two thousand fifteen splash and the economy was coming in pretty weak. Um, we focused all of our efforts and all of the money that came in for the two thousand fifteen on named projects for the two thousand fifteen splash. Um, and we're happy to say that we did get all those named projects completed and funded as we went. Um, the economy picked up right towards the end of our receipts coming in and when we got our final tallies uh, for the two thousand fifteen splash, we recognize more dollars in two thousand fifteen. So we have the money out of the two thousand fifteen splash and I just wanna reiterate that no other projects were being sacrificed because of it.
And also back to, um, Ms. Williams', um, point. We always accept public-private partnerships and, and donations and so um, if, if there were an opportunity, if, if the, an, a group, not necessarily alumni, but a group wanted to enhance something at this particular stadium, there is an opportunity for that to occur.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. And I also think I might have been confused. I went back to clarify it in my text. I think I got it because of the, because of the contiguousness of these two projects confused with the, um, with this, with the school site for the school facility. So, uh, you know, I may have spoken out of turn and if I, if I have, please forgive me.
Yeah, I think that's prob- probably, Emma. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if I were muted, muted. I think that's probably what's going on at a lot of these schools because I know with the, um, Spencer, the, uh, actual school as opposed to athletic field. Uh, I know Carver now is also raising money for the same thing and I heard Kathy say something about Columbus High. Uh, those individual schools now are, uh, raising money for their own, uh, sign and twitch. Which is, which is very expensive. That campus, that individual.
Raising it, just for clarity, they're raising it for their campus fields, the fields on their campus.
Right.
And the support.
Individual, right. Thank you, Mrs. Spencer.
If any more questions, it's, it's gonna be a beautiful, beautiful field there. It's something that all of Columbus, Georgia, the whole district will, will definitely be proud of it. And it's a, it's an asset for, for our whole school system. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? If not, we'll move on to the next project. It's six point oh two, the construction project for Matthews Elementary. Um, the construction department requests board approval to upgrade the walk-in cooler freezer and four classrooms and other renovation work at Matthews Elementary School as per the two thousand twenty splash. The existing cafeteria kitchen walk-in cooler freezer unit needs replacement due to age and condition. Construction department is also requesting NKM architect to oversee the design and construction of the work required. Um, it's Goldberg, maybe you can answer this. My first question is, is, um, NKM architect, how are these architects chose to this? Are they bid it out? Are they, uh, I mean, tell me a little bit of how we come up with an architect to, to do this.
As you can, we, uh, consider the architects, um, a professional service. I know I brought y'all, um, a list of architects and engineering firms that y'all approved several months ago. And then, um, the construction department, um, along with some other of our administrators, um, some of our other chiefs. Um, what we do is we look at the project and we look at the expertise of each group and we look at how much work they have. And then we decide, um, with them and we work out, we negotiate with the architects contracts for each project.
Okay, so it's not bid it out between the architects that we had approved for units?
No, sir. It's not bid out through them.
Okay. Is there a, a large difference? Of course, I guess it all depends if you're doing a, uh, you know, an athletic.
Yeah, the smaller, smaller projects usually command about seven percent. Renovation projects usually command about seven percent. Um, newer projects that are small, maybe six percent. So we negotiate anywhere between six and seven percent for our projects.
Okay, that answered that question. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen on it? If not, we can move to the next one, which is six point oh three, the construction project for Veterans Memorial School. Um, approve expansion of Veterans Memorial Middle School Band Room. Other renovation projects from two thousand twenty splash with Barnes Gibson Partners as the project architect. Any questions on it? If not, we'll move to the next one.
Mr. Cantrell, if I may, I think we skipped over Matthews.
I thought that was Matthews we were just talking about. It was.
The addition? Okay, all right. I wanna make sure we had the addition. Okay, I'm sorry. Just wanna make sure we got it.
Questions on that, going back, David, on that. If not?
I'm fine.
Yes, sir. Six point oh four, resolution capital outlay projects. Resolution to withdraw Lonnie Jackson Academy Georgetown Elementary School, Arnold Middle School, Eddie Middle School from the approved FY two thousand seventeen, Sue, COP entitlement applications with the State Board of Education because COVID nineteen caused delay of construction schedule and not being able to be able to meet state's deadline. We're planning to resubmit entitlement applications for Eddie Middle School in July, August twenty-one to start construction in two thousand twenty-two. Any questions on that, folks? If not, we can move to the next one. Six point oh five, resolution of completion of Forest Road Elementary School. Uh, the dishwasher at Forest Road Elementary School has been replaced using Georgia DOE Capital Outlay Program Funds. Resolution Certificate of the Board of Education for final payment to the Georgia DOE Capital Outlay Program Rebursement for the following. Any questions? If not, we move to six point oh six, resolution Arnold Modernization. Upgrades to Arnold Middle School are included in the FY seventeen, FY two thousand eighteen approved entitlement applications for State Board of Education. The, uh, these upgrades need to become part of a total modification to Arnold Middle School and are in the two thousand twenty ESPLS. This request is to withdraw Arnold Middle School from the approved State Board of Education applications by approval of attached resolution. Then the funding is available for total modernization application of State Board of Education.
So, boy, y'all can see, we're just lining everything up with the two thousand twenty projects with our entitlement, with the State Department. That way we have it all, everything lined up and all the projects work out and the timing works out so we can maximize our dollars with the state.
I know all these schools will be tickled to death to get all these projects started and, and finished up. Arnold's an old school. It's, that'd be wonderful for our, and, and all the rest of them also.
Yes, yes.
Um, six point oh seven, construction status report. David, do you have an update on that? Any questions from the board?
Um, it is attached. The construction status report is attached. If anybody has any question, we're just trying to finish out the last name projects from, uh, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, if there's no more questions, that's all for the construction committee, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Next committee is, uh, policy committee. There are no items on our policy committee. Uh, no items submitted for our discipline committee. And next, Ms. Williams, finance.
Hey, Madam Chair, uh, nine point zero one, like to bring the board's attention to the FY twenty-two board uh, budget parameters. See what kind of input any board members might have. If you remember, this is sort of the frame in which we, uh, try to put our budget for the next year. Um, this year's, uh, governor's budget includes funding, uh, statewide for some new, some old and some revised funding initiatives. Are there any questions? Um, David, do you have any specifics you wanna draw our attention to? I mean, there's a lot of meat in this document that we need to all consider.
No, ma'am. I think, uh, it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory, but obviously we're working toward ensuring we don't have furloughs, which I know is important for our employees and working toward, uh, balancing our budget and rebuilding our, uh, fund balance over time.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, that takes us to nine, nine point zero two, a tangential calendar that accompanies the budget process. Um, I bring your attention to this because a lot of it is, um, codified in state legislation, so we are required to comply with this. Um, I, I would like for you all to pay attention to it because we will adhere to it as much as possible and hopefully there's no surprises between now and then. Are there any questions on the calendar? Hearing none, that takes us to nine point zero three. This is purchase.
This is Janice, sorry.
Please, yes.
Um, just, uh, there was one date that needed to be, um, updated that didn't get updated. There's a, um, on the, uh, the planned, uh, I'm trying to get to it and see both of them at the same time. The on the the, we are planning to, um, adopt the budget on the twenty-first. There were places in here that still said June twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So the, the final adoption of the budget is planned for the twenty-first of May, of June, sorry, of June.
So Janice, if you'll make sure that gets updated before next.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what's on the attachment here is, um, June twenty-first final adoption. There is no June twenty-eighth date on here.
On the May twenty-first, it references that. So, um, as far as the public hearing.
All right, we'll update, update this calendar and send it out, please.
Yes, we will.
All right, thank you. My board members, that takes us to nine point zero three as we begin our purchase.
Sorry, sorry. I couldn't unmute fast enough. Sorry, Kathy. Um, our June meetings, what are our regular board meetings? Are they in line with this? Sorry.
They will be. We will have called meetings if necessary.
Well, no, in the past, we've just made sure we kinda had our regular meetings spaced out enough to where we didn't have to do a called meeting.
Oh, I, I think we always have called meetings. Uh, Karen, do you have any comment on how that lines up? You're on mute.
Yes, normally we, we do have the call meetings in addition to the regular meetings because there's a specific timeline I think that finance has to work with.
Right.
And I believe. We can accommodate a called board meeting in conjunction with a regularly scheduled work session, but it still constitutes a called board meeting.
Called meeting, yes.
I know, but I'll go back and look, but I do believe last year we did it where our main meetings were two weeks apart so that we didn't have to have a third called meeting. But I'll, I'll regroup. I hadn't looked at that close enough until now, but I'll get back and look.
That, no, that's a good point. Janice, when you work on, um, the adjustment to this fiscal year calendar, would you mind adding into the appropriate blocks when it is in conjunction with a scheduled board meeting? Or when it may be an actual standalone called meeting?
And I will, I will add that in there. Um, but there was, for this, there was a called meeting, um, the first week in, um, June. Um, for that, and the reason we were trying to align with the cities when they were adopting their information um, for the village and, uh, so that the twenty-first would align with that date. and so that the twenty first would align with that date and we would need to back up two weeks.
So June seventh would be a standalone called meeting?
Yes.
Okay, maybe highlight that on this.
I will.
What I'm saying is we might want to look to see if our work session might connect in line with that called meeting because I know George, June's a very busy time to have three separate meetings, especially if we think we'll be back in person.
Session isn't until the fourteenth and the code requires that we back up two weeks, which puts us at the seventh, the fourteenth would be too late to do it.
Which is what I was saying, was move our work session to the seventh. I'll look back, but I think that's what we did last year. We did a work session earlier or we back, we moved one or the other to where there was a two week gap in between.
Well, that's, that, the, the, the meeting schedule change would be separate to this, so Lori, I'll let you work with David, with Dr. Lewis and with, with Karen and seeing how that can marry up. I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think that logic is very well put.
Yeah, I'll look at it. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you.
No, Lori, you're remembering correctly. We did adjust the work session. The work session and the regular scheduled board meetings were two weeks apart to be compliant, so we wouldn't have all of those meetings and so.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, so I'll let y'all work that out, but until then, for this item, the budget calendar is pretty set. It doesn't and we, we now acknowledge it doesn't marry up with the board calendar, but we'll work on that.
Okay, thanks.
No, thank you. Thanks for bringing it to our attention and our remembrance. All right, any other questions on the calendar, board members? It takes us to nine point zero three, this is purchase exceptions under bids and quotations. This is six items before you for a lot of the libraries and for printing and hands-on engaging for elementary, kindergarten, fifth grade research-based curriculum, the gifted program, as well as some staff training. Are there any questions on those six items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point zero four, this is purchase exception C for maintenance under bids and quotations, you have one item for the annual technical support and upgrade for our routing software, pretty important piece of equipment. Are there any questions or discussions on that item? Seeing and hearing none, that takes us to nine point zero five, this is purchase exception E under bids and quotations. You have one item from various, well, actually I think it's two, but it says various vendors to increase the purchase thresholds on two federal programs. Are there any questions on those items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point zero six, this is purchase exception F. Now you have two items before you under the invitation to bid and request for proposals. One is for roofing and canopy work and one is for our CTAE classroom furniture. Are there any questions on either of those items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point zero seven, under purchase exception G. You have two items, one from CSU's Coca-Cola Space Science Center, which I think deserves being read. It is to provide astronomy and physical science programs. Students grades K through three at school site FY two thousand twenty one and then one item for professional service contract for Jordan High School. Are there any questions or discussions on either of these two items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to your monthly nine point zero eight. You have two items for purchase order increases. One is for innovative interfaces for the library system and the other is for, for ChuCom. Are there any questions or discussion on either of these items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point zero nine, under competitively bid purchases. You have two items, one is for conveyor ovens at both Kendrick and Shaw High Schools and also for total restaurant equipment for the sale of school nutrition program surplus equipment. Are there any questions or discussion on either of these items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes you to nine point one zero, your monthly new budget items as Division of Student Services, Division of Teaching and Learning and Programs for Exceptional Students. Make their budget adjustments to their, it looks like all federal programs. Are there any questions or discussions on any of these items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point eleven. This is your monthly budget adjustments under Department of Information Services, Division of Teaching and Learning. You have several items for adjusting Title One, Title Two, CTAE, Fund One Fifty and K twelve curriculum. Any questions, discussions on either one of these items? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to nine point one two, this is your monthly financial statements. Any questions on anything within those monthly statements which include our financial statements, the investment summary, our East Splotch revenue detail as well as capital project expenditure reports? So a lot of detail in there for anybody who wants to get down into the nitty gritty of things. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, that takes us to my favorite. Donations for the month, I'll bring your attention to the PowerPoint and the spreadsheet. Over thirteen thousand, nearing fourteen thousand dollars in donations from public and private partnerships, from clubs and companies, from private citizens, from a community that continues to amaze all of us and their support of our Public Education Center and their absolute commitment to not only the public education, but a public education of all of our students. And I'm sure that concludes the finance committee's report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and as we get ready to wrap things up, we have some board information as the last section of our agenda. All minds and hearts clear, does anyone have any requests or need anything from superintendent before he, before he gives us an update?
I think, and you might be going to touch on this, but maybe give a little more background on the virtual survey that was sent out to parents. I think just, you know, kind of, again, the background behind that.
That's on my update, yes.
Also.
But before we go, there was a, Ms. Buckner had made a request last month regarding ventilation and I have Mr. Goldberg and Mr. Odom here to bring you an update on the ventilation issue or update. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Goldberg and Mr. Odom.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Lewis and Ms. Buckner, just to kind of give you a quick update on the air conditioning and ventilation system and how we monitor that in the school district. On the RHFAC system, which stands for, for, for NOD, for Heating, Ventilation and Air Condition, is, is monitored through ASRACE standards specifically for classrooms, ASRACE standard six two point one. And, and ASRACE, it stands for American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Industries. There's a wonderful formula that's put out there on how they figure out how much fresh air to bring into the schools and whatnot. Whether you have a classroom with windows or a classroom that's blocked or in interior. Basically, and this, this, it's a big formula, but say at the high level, they base it on how many cubic feet per minute of air is brought into the room and is, is based per occupant, occupant, occupant in the room. And that's at fifteen CFM that's brought in. This allows for the fresh air in the rooms to come in and pretty much change over, it's like the room you're sitting in or the boardroom or any classroom. The air we breathe changes over approximately five to six times per hour. So if it's six times every ten minutes, there you breathe and it's moved out of the room and, and fresh air is brought back in. The filter systems that, that we use on the HFA system are a MERV nine with antimicrobial media. I have a little, a little picture here of what, what it looks like from our perspective. Hopefully you can see that. The, the orange piece is what we use, that's the antimicrobial media. And, and the white part is, is the, the filter media that captures the particles. So our MERV nine captures a point five micron particle, which in the air is basically like a dust or a mold spore. There are folks out there that are going up to a MERV thirteen if, if your situation allows it. Well, MERV thirteen stops a point three micron particle, so a little bit, little bit smaller. Yeah, but our COVID virus is, is way, way smaller than that, so no matter which one you use, you're at a point, you know, it could be all the way from a point oh one micron up to a point two, which, talking to several experts in, in the engineers about this, the COVID virus has to attach to another and it's on the heavy molecules, like, you know, that's why we wear masks to cover it up. So to get into the ventilation system, literally, you would have to walk over to, to the air-conditioned vent and sneeze or cough into the vent for it to even get over to that point because it's used so heavy and falls down. And so we basically follow in the CDC guidelines of, of packing the COVID nineteen at schools by, you know, social distancing masks, you know, washing our hands thoroughly. That's, that's the best advice that we've given out and continue to do so. But that is kind of how we have handled our situation before COVID and after. There is a, just to give you a financial issue of going from a MERV nine to a MERV thirteen, we spend about a quarter of a million dollars annually on filter changeout, which we change our filters every eight weeks. If, if we went to a MERV thirteen, it's an immediate one million dollar addition to the filter media itself and then the countless equipment that it would destroy because if you, if you're talking to an HVAC person, they really don't want to use a filter media at all, you know, they want the air to flow through. But the static pressures, the high pressures that are in the units and, and as you know, we have fifty-three sites, schools and a, a lot of different types of equipment, but we will get into the millions and millions of dollars because our equipment was not designed for that type of, of media. But going, going back, this kind of a bullet point piece, we changed the, the filter systems that we have every eight weeks and we continue and bring in the fresh air so the, the air changes over in the room, you know, five to six times per hour. And we encourage, with intentions, make sure that people, you know, wash their hands, social distancing and face masks. Does that kind of give you what you were looking for?
That kind of gives me what we were looking, am I, am I on mute?
No, you're fine.
Okay, that, that kind of gives me what I'm looking for in terms of making sure that that our air quality is good and as you initially started your first presentation, the first part, you, you addressed that part and of course I don't know, you told the standard that we are using and, and you said that was acceptable standard and we, we are using that and everything is okay. That's what I want to make sure of because I've had, I've had teachers actually ask me about the, about our ventilation system, you know, when they said we're, we're sitting in a classroom, there's no air. And so, and hopefully some, you know, people are listening to this presentation and have the assurance that we do have proper ventilation in our classrooms and our classrooms are safe so they can be assured that they are going to work in a safe place every day.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, perhaps maybe you can add that ventilation information to our COVID nineteen guidelines that are placed on our websites and social media to go ahead and add that piece about the ventilation process that you just described.
Yes, we can do that, that'd be fine. We can, we can add something on there. More, you and I can get together with Mr. Goldberg and Ms. Parham and DIS and figure out how we can get that on there. So if anybody has any questions, they'll know where to find it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Odom.
Also, where we, Dr. Lewis, also where we talk about our COVID nineteen to place it, make that an item as well as.
That's what I'm saying, yes, that'll be on our COVID nineteen page, yeah. All right, you ready for other updates at this time?
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Buckner. So I'll go ahead and address the, the virtual franchise, the, we're, we're currently surveying. And let me just go back, back eight years ago when I developed a strategic plan for our district for the long-term ten-year plan. There was a goal in there for us to evaluate and possibly implement a MCSD franchise, virtual school, if you will, a virtual academy for our students taught by our teachers. And coincidentally, COVID came along and we all became a virtual academy at one point. But now we want to go back and find out because we've had an interest by some of our students, parents and teachers for that consideration going forward. To that end, we are surveying our parents to see what their interest is, to gauge their interest in continuing a virtual option going forward, but also giving them an idea as part of the survey as to what kind of students would be successful in a virtual environment. How'd they do this year? What classes are they interested in? That sort of thing. So from that, we are going to gauge the interest, gauge what grade levels might be the most interest for Virtual Academy and consider, depending on that interest level, consider moving forward with some form of a virtual academy for our school district based on that interest. And that's what we're gauging right now by way of that survey. All right?
You know, just for clarity, again, that's going to be a separate program.
Totally separate, it'll be, yes, it'll be a totally separate, all virtual program taught by virtual teachers in that environment as well. So it'd be a totally separate, not like the concurrent model we're currently in, but a totally separate model. But it's looking at a program that would offer this and like I said, we're, we're trying to judge the interest on that from the standpoint. It would be available to, whether it be elementary, middle or higher, all three. Our, our eventual plan is to try and build a virtual academy franchise for the MCSD district taught by our teachers rather than some of the models right now, you have Georgia Virtual and stuff like that, and those are asynchronous, meaning that the activities are basically canned activities. We're looking at something to provide direct instruction with a virtual environment.
Dr. Lewis, first of all, I think that's an excellent idea and I would hope that you get lots of parents that say, yes, we would be interested. But my question is, who is receiving this survey? Will all parents in Muskogee County receive this survey? And when is it going out again?
Mercedes, I don't know if you can share, it may have already gone out.
It's already out, I've already taken it as a parent.
Yeah, I thought it had already gone out.
That's correct. It, it went out last Friday and it will close on March eighteenth at five P M.
There's an opportunity for students to take.
This is McRae, we did hear you.
Sorry, I was going to say, you know, parents can take it and students as well.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
But again, we're looking at making sure that these are students who have the options, you know, like the connectivity they would need and how, how are they doing? We're trying to give them a profile of the kind of student that typically is successful in this environment and so on. So all that's being pulled together so we can have a better idea of how much interest there is, what grade level they're interested in, what courses, as well as how we might project this going forward.
Would, would, would students be able?
Because of COVID, parents will hopefully participate in the survey and it's on their mind about whether or not it's doable or even a possibility for their children, including parents who don't have kids currently enrolled in Muskogee K twelve. But because virtual learning is not going anywhere, it is an item in the state's budget. So we're just hopeful that it remains there to have some funding to go along with as certain school districts are, are marked to pilot it and, and we're hopeful that Muskogee can be one of those.
Absolutely.
What we would, in our virtual schools, would students be able to move some point at their own pace? Or would they all be pretty much at the same place?
Well, again, our hope is that we would have direct instruction provided by our teachers in this environment rather than, but, but again, that's part of the survey is to determine the interest in direct instruction versus asynchronous or a combination of the two.
Yeah, combination.
Did that cover it, Ms. McRae? Did that cover it, Ms. McRae? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Um, next, I just wanted to, uh, again, just remind our employees, uh, if they've not already done so, we put out a, uh, an opportunity for vaccinations for our employees last Friday. Just want to again, remind them that, that there is a sign-up opportunity out there. Uh, uh, check your email, uh, from last Friday. We are having a max vacina, vaccination uh, on March the 11th and again, planned on March the 19th for our employees, uh, to try and give them one more opportunity to get the vaccination if that's something they desire. Uh, so that sign-up is out there and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the volunteers, thank our staff, our nurses, everyone who is working to make this, uh, feasible for our employees. It's a great service, a great opportunity and hopefully a convenience for our employees.
Dr. Lewis, I'd like to take a minute to just say thank you as well as the staff who has really, um, proactively worked to ready us for this opportunity. It's not like the governor said, well, what do you think? And we said, well, let's think about it. I mean, there, there was so much work done prior to the governor ever offer, uh, offering it just to, on the, on the chance that we may have this opportunity and that foresight enabled us to be able to implement this on a large scale very quickly. So thank you, Dr. Lewis, to you, to your team that worked so hard to have everything in place so that as soon as the governor said, are y'all interested? We said, oh yeah, we got a plan. We're there. Let's do it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And it's also worth noting that the vaccine that will be distributed is the Johnson vaccine, which is one dose, one shot, correct?
That is correct. That's at, that's at this point in time, we're, uh, trying to see if there might be other options, if there are people who prefer one or the other. But at this point in time, it is the Johnson and Johnson. That's what we've been given and that's what we know we're receiving for sure.
Well, if I had given a, if I were given a choice, that's all I'd choose. One and done.
Yes, ma'am. All right. And two other things. Uh, congratulations to the Carver Girls basketball team. The Lady Tigers are playing for the state championship this Wednesday in Macon at five o'clock. So go Tigers. And finally, um, as was mentioned earlier this, uh, this evening, the First Foundation, who is a great partner with our school district, with our pre-K, uh, they are currently for the month of March, having a fundraising opportunity. You can vote for one of several, uh, personalities that have agreed to, uh, work toward, uh, providing funding for our First Foundation to get, ensure that our students are birthed to, uh, grade four, have books in their hands. And to that extent, to that end, uh, just know that four votes for any one of the personalities out there guarantees that a child receives books at their home for an entire year. So, uh, go out and, uh, visit the website for First Foundation and vote for your favorite personality or personalities. As my wife would tell you, give early, give often and give much.
Anybody, anybody, um, in particular, we might, uh, know personally on this board or, or management?
Well, I, I've heard that Professor Snape and, uh, Professor McGonigal from Harry Potter have made some appearances out there on the First Foundation, but there are many other great ones as well. So, uh, but I will just tell you that, uh, yes, I'm, I'm serving in that role and, uh, of Professor Severus Snape. And, uh, my wife is serving as Professor McGonigal. And again, uh, but that's just all for us trying to get the, uh, you know, get books in little hands. So like I said, vote early, vote often and vote, uh, vote much. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lewis. All right. So we have 10.02 is the youth arts month.
I might also point out this, uh, we have next week, we have a proclamation for school board appreciation, uh, week as a result of all the work that our, uh, board members do on, on behalf of, uh, our students and our community. We thank you very much. We'll make that official next week. But we thank you so much for your dedication and commitment to our, our, uh, education of our young people.
Okay. And so for the, we will have, um, is that going to be a resolution or something next month with?
Yes, we'll read that. Yes, ma'am. We'll read that for official action into the, into the, uh, record next, uh, Monday evening as part of our action agenda.
Okay. Anything else, board members? All right then, we will see you next Monday.
Thank you all. Go Tigers.
Yeah, next Monday. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.